We've got hot mics now.
I work there, yes. I work for her as a maid.
Because they don't need help?
What? I can't change that though.
There you go?
Yeah.
Over you go.
Bring it up in your piano.
You know, they start, they start cutting on the end of it. Sometimes it's like, you look like you're pillow.
I'm all right.
My kids age when the show starts, you're ten.
Hi. So one other thing too that I'm going to be covering. If you remember back in January, some weird buildings in our plant were shown in the floodplain. We've completed, you authorized, if that needs to be fixed, let's fix it. We're ready to submit that. It is out. But we have our signatures here on the bottom. I will leave this with you. When it's done, I'm going to remind the board by giving them a copy of this and just explain, this is what we talked about. We're ready to move forward. And that's what I'm going to do. So I'll get this distributed. Thanks. I'll leave that for you. And then when you get, when you get it signed at the bottom, fill it out. Just send it, ship it to me. There's two copies there.
All right, it is six o'clock. Let's call a meeting in the Board of Works in Public Safety for Monday, August fourth, twenty twenty-five. To order, Madam Clerk, roll the ball, please.
Boylan, here. Crim, here. Jones, here. Tyner, Waters, here.
If I could, I will remind the board to please speak into the microphones. We are live streaming, the way there's clear communication throughout, not only the audience, but people who were sitting at home watching on the east. The second item on the agenda this evening are the approval of the minutes from Monday, July seventh. If there are no amendments or corrections to these minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Mrs. Boylan.
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Waters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign. Moving down the agenda this evening to number three are the claims. Madam Clerk.
You've already seen the claims. They were for July first to July the first. A total of one million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and twelve cents. Was there any questions?
Um, ours. Mine? I still think we're charged twice for membership. And I just wanted to make sure that that's what you did.
On the chart?
I think it was there in the song, membership.
Do you happen to know?
I just wanted to make sure they weren't held charged.
Okay.
I paid their membership twice.
Okay, yep.
I can make sure that that's.
It was just a one hundred and ninety-nine.
How much was it?
Maybe a hundred and ninety-nine. When we had our paper copies, I can. No, it's early. Yeah. If it's on page twenty. I don't have the legal books, so we can annual membership fee. Oh, one twenty-nine eighty-three and something twice. But it may be like a difficult amount.
I mean, we can.
That's okay. What we'll do is if there's a motion to approve the claims, what Madam Clerk is looking at dual charge. Is there a motion to approve the claims as presented?
Motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Mrs. Boylan. Is there a second?
Motion.
Got a second by Mr. Waters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And approved would be the same sign. Moving down the agenda this afternoon for this evening is the additional claims. Madam Clerk. No additional claims. We move us down to utility adjustments. Mrs. Bachman is in the audience. If there are any questions regarding the utility adjustments in the amount of one thousand eight hundred, oh, excuse me, one million eight hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Mrs. Bachman, you want to talk about that for a second?
A couple of years back when Regal.
Can you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
So a couple of years back when Regal took their tomato waste to arrest us instead of going to us, they, we, once the contract was up, we couldn't come to an agreement on the proper billing of what we were receiving and what they say we're receiving. And then they put in meters to monitor their sewage. And it started out with five, and then they were taking meters away from those five. It made it, it made it difficult to come up with a number to build a map and agree on the number that we felt was fair based on what we're receiving from well water on the docks, waste, that type of thing. And so we just started billing them like we do everybody else, their sewage based on their water consumption. And so at this point, it was expressed to get that off the books. So it doesn't look like we have an income after this, obviously never going to be.
So that's where the adjustment came in when Regal agreed to send all of their waste, except the sanitary, to the wastewater treatment plant. They pump all that now to arrest us. They have let their permit expire that would send any processed waste to our wastewater treatment plant. So the only thing that we will be receiving from them is from their restrooms. So that's how we monitor the billing from those meters. So that's why this number is so high this month compared to in the past. If this number was going off of just the meter readings from water, even though they weren't sending us any of their waste, food, processed waste. So with that being said, that's where the adjustment came into play. So it's just clearing the books.
When you said they were five meters, now there's not as many. When we started, when we started reading those meters for their sanitary waste, they originally installed five, and then it went to four, and then it went to three. And it's like, okay, they were just changing things in the plant. And so we, you have to have tracking to be able to obviously do billing. So it made it impossible to come up with numbers and that type of thing.
So that true number isn't the waste that was being treated at our utility plant. It's just clerical where it cleans up the books. Thank you, Mrs. Bachman. Board, is there any further questions? No further questions. I'd entertain a motion to approve the utility adjustments.
Motion to approve.
A motion on the floor by Mrs. Boylan. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Crim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving down the agenda this evening is the Whitaker Engineering Agreement. Mr. Ginnell, would you like to come forward, please? I believe Cecil is also in the audience. If you both would like to come forward, please speak into the microphones so everyone at home and in the audience can hear what's going on.
This is Cecil Whitaker's agreement designed on phase three of our control plan. And he also, we have an update on the floodplain. Survey is done to, I think, a contract you guys approved a couple of months ago to get us somewhere we have for, turn it over to Cecil.
Yes, the phase three, as you probably know, is the next step in the series of commitments that Cee's made on their long-term control plan. This is an addition of twenty million gallon per day capacity. I think this is part of our human plant to handle combined sewage. This is consistent with the long-term plan. And as Josh can attest, during this summer, its need has never been more apparent in terms of the kind of flows the wastewater treatment plant is seeing for extended periods. So this is to increase that capacity. It's definitely a commitment in the long-term control plan, but it's also something that the facility needs to operate the way it needs to operate during these weather conditions. So Jeff has reviewed that and is good with it, is consistent with the cost numbers that we've given the town as part of the P E R. All that's been checked. So it just requires an official answer and signature from the Board of Works authorizing the mayor to sign it. And then after that, I'd like to talk a little bit about the flood map.
So the first order of business that we'll address this evening is the standard form of agreement between the owner and engineer for professional services. This will be the agreement that City of Wood enters into with Whitaker Engineering. So Cecil's been with us for several years now doing the long-term control planning, trying to prepare us for phase three of what is in the I D A three order. Currently, we're able to treat everything that's coming to the plant. We've had significant rain events this, this summer and late spring. And a lot of times Josh and I are communicating that, hey, I've had to pull the plant back, you know, push it to full throttle with, with the concerns that we don't want to flood the plant and take out generators, and then we would really be in a bad situation. So Cecil's plan is to help water that's out of the system, stormwater that's out of the system that can be captured and treated. So that would be our phase three look. It's something that would take some stress off the plant in some certain areas where we are having some C S Os that during heavy rain events, we have to file reports with I D A to let them know what's going on. This is something that Josh is, it's in his wheelhouse way more than mine. But he's versed me pretty well over the years in some of our situations. And I have to tell him to dump it down a little bit for me to understand. But Josh would kind of like to add to that.
Yes, I just want to say that we just had an inspection from I D A Thursday. And that was the night that we got a bunch of rain. And so I showed Andy Schmidt, our inspector, just the graph that we were taking in two and a half million gallons. And then when it, when the rain hit, all of a sudden, within five minutes, it's up to seventeen point eight. And, and he thought about that during the inspection. And about an hour later, he says, because I've been thinking about that jump in flow. He goes, I don't know of any other plant that has that, that immediate range like that. So, so it, it, it's like that, it been like that the whole summer.
Yeah, any rain events, it just spikes.
Yeah.
So how often do those spikes happen?
Well, ever, every rainy day, especially if the rain is intense. We get half inch rain in fifteen minutes, it's, it's spike.
But I remember both of those are less.
They're less because of what we've done through phase one and two.
Phase two, yes.
And so we've made significant progress, but there's still, you know, phase three to go to and to, and to make even more progress.
I think it's probably a five to six phase process. A lot of it comes down to money. And, you know, we can't, can't jump to phase six automatically because our rates would just be astronomical. So we have to bleed it in over time to be able to make progress for safe, clean drinking water, to stop any of the overflows. But we're currently working on a phase three. So board, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Does each phase have a certain amount of capacity?
Yes, each phase is, it's about five years per phase. And then so once we get into this one, then we'll start working on that.
And basically what we'll do with phase three is we'll look at the impact of what phase three has done and the benefits before we move to phase four. So we were a little bit delayed on phase three because we wanted to see exactly what phase two's impact had. And we realized that phase two's impact was treating everything that was coming to the plant. But there was still overflows out of the system to address with phase three. So that's how we kind of changed our plans. We, we send in for change orders. We may go different directions. Once we see what phase three is, phase four may be a completely separate, separate idea than what we initially planned with phase four until phase three is done so we can see the impact. So tonight, we would basically just get an agreement from the board to enter into the contract with Whitaker Engineering, which Mr. Crim has already approved the verbiage. And I just need formal approval tonight so Cecil can continue to do what he does. So board, is there a motion?
Motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Crim. Is there a second?
Right.
Got a second by Mr. Waters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign. Then we've got one more document here.
I do, I'd like to pass this up and I can look at. This is an aerial view of the wastewater treatment plant. You can see the big tanks pretty much in the center. Off to the left, you'll see a blue shaded area. That's the current limit on the, on your floodplain as currently in the FEMA program. What we've, what we've determined and thought all along is that the structures that are there, one of which shows a proposed location for what's called a twenty M G D storm king. It's shown in the floodplain as well as some buildings.
One of them being your lab.
One of them being your lab. And in the other, in other words, this is, this has a significant impact not only on how you can use the facilities in the future, but also potentially on your insurance rates. If you've got buildings that have equipment, but significantly expensive equipment in an area that's shown in the floodplain. So what we've determined, as you authorized it, is that a study's been done and determined that in fact, those structures are not in the floodplain. But to make the insurance issue and the ability with the state built stuff, that needs to be removed. It's called a letter of map amendment or L O M A. So we're ready to file that. It does require that the Board of Works authorize the signing of that application, certifying that, yes, we want this accepted. Then once that's signed, I take it to the surveyor who did the surveying. They provide a certification. Then this gets submitted. As of now, we see no problem with the, what's called the map amendment occurring, but there is a process we have to go through. So we've got the information. We're ready to submit the certification with the documents that have been prepared to get this change made. So what I'm asking is that the board authorize the mayor to sign the application, certification, board that, and then we'll continue with the process to get this corrected.
So, so board, we just need a motion for approval to sign the documents that would be reported to the Department of Homeland Security to remove the area as earmarked out of the floodplain. Got a motion by Mr. Waters. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boylan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cecil. Number six on the agenda this evening is Craig Marks' three claims. Madam Clerk.
I have three claims for redevelopment from March, April, and May. We were pulling off on paying those until more of the pool got completed. Items were, you know, just checked off. And there's a punch list that everybody's working on. And it's gotten to about six things. But these bills from redevelopment is for specifically one company, and they only have one item left in a warranty situation. So I had emailed everybody that's been on the pool group email to decide if, with the part of the word, everything is the same, they're five processes. And they are now, you know, there's no, like, everything's getting completed and it's going good now. So all, really all I need.
Yeah, is a motion to approve the three claims that we had pulled previously during the run.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor by Mrs. Boylan. Is there a second? Got a second by Mr. Crim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign. Moving down the agenda this evening is John Peterson Contract. Madam Clerk.
This is for our business assets that we have to do every year. They kept the rate the same, and they are still ones that are consulting with the state board of accounts on change everything with them. So again, it's great that we got this company decades ago, so.
Okay, we've had a good relationship with Peterson Consulting for several years. They've done a lot of our updates and documents that are needed. So this is.
It's actually, they helped too on, oh, some utility things with us that we should, that they've kind of did over and above, you know. We asked them if they had some information and they were able to help us out on that, so.
Board, is there a motion to approve the contract with Peterson Consulting?
Motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Mr. Crim. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Waters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign. Moving down to number eight this evening is Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero five dash zero one. Madam Clerk.
This is a resolution that the Board of Works needs to do. We've kind of had to do one of these, but it is to transfer monies from the Elwood Redevelopment Commission to the Wastewater Project Fund. And the Wastewater Project Fund is the Board of Works. So the E O C has already approved this amount, up to six hundred thousand. We were moving, well, we usually do with utility projects is we get a fan or long anticipation in. And then once we get that a little bit later, then we actually get the big bond and pay that long anticipation. But the council passed that, everything was going good, but we had not raised rates. And S R F decided to, this was our first one that we had to do, send an opinion with that. So because of the, we hadn't been rates increased or anything like that, we decided to use funds on hand until we actually get the big bond when phase three project, when we start that. So what the resolution is, is just you guys accepting money from the E O C to pay those ones that they come through.
And then that money would be reimbursed back to the E O C as a temporary loan. Board, is there a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash five dash zero one?
Aye.
Got a motion on the floor by Mr. Waters.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boylan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign. Later this afternoon, we received an email from Mr. Crim regarding a sand dose.
Sand act, right? That's right.
For an opioid settlement that is eligible for Indiana communities, part of the opioid lawsuit that we recently had received some funds for. The amount off the, off the top that is expected to be in the city of Elwood is around twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and thirty-two cents. Mr. Crim, is this just authorized that the city of Elwood wants to engage in this lawsuit?
Correct. The, this is a settlement amount that the city is, is part of our contingent agreement with Go In and Block. That's the amount that all of the similarly situated defendants are tied up to. It's based pro rata on size and damage and things like that. The city has two options at this point. The city can enter into this settlement and accept those funds, or they can decline the settlement and proceed individually against the defendant. And I should have, I said earlier that we were a defendant, we're a plaintiff in this case. But these defendants are, are, excuse me, our council believes that accepting the settlement is the better way to go because then we, if we didn't accept that, we could fit it around legal bills and it would quickly in this kind of lawsuit go over twenty-six thousand. Recommendation, Go In and Block in my office is to accept this settlement.
And this is similar to the agreement in the past that we had done for the opioid lawsuit was to accept the agreement and not pursue litigation on our own because of the costs that would be inflicted to the municipality. With that being said, the opioid monies have been going to Madison County Path. They have set up a office directly across the street in one of the former St. Vincent Hospital offices. They have entered into a agreement to rent space from them. One of the things is there's an abated share and then an unabated share. So the abated share has to be used for opioid recovery services specifically. The unabated share can be used for whatever the municipality sees fit. But with that being said, the unabated share is not nearly as much as what the whole purpose of the opioid funding was to be, was to get recovery services in the city of Elwood. was to get recovery services in the city of Elwood. So not only does this office supply services for, for residents of Elwood, but they also supply for northern Madison County. And in twenty twenty-four, Madison County PATH had a total of two hundred and sixty-five appointments in their facility. So that's, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, they saw two hundred, had two hundred and sixty-five appointments. Out of those two hundred and sixty-five appointments, a hundred and forty-two of those were intakes, a hundred and eight were therapy sessions, fifty-four were in-person visits, thirty-three were individual sessions with a psychologist, and then thirty-two were specific sessions where they were, uh, focused on a certain addiction at the time. And then fifty-three group sessions with approximately five participants, uh, totaling two hundred and sixty-five group attendees. They also had nine Prime for Life participants. So to say that we're not making a difference on trying to address the opioid crisis in the city of Elwood and northern Madison County, the proof is right here in the numbers that's provided by Madison County PATH. The same focus will be when this lawsuit money, uh, lawsuit settlement comes in, the twenty-six thousand dollars, eight hundred, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and thirty-two cents will be fully directed towards those resources. Board, do you, do you have any questions? There's no questions. I'm entertaining just a motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
This board, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Mrs. Boylan. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Crim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign. Wrapping up the agenda this evening is the safety manual that was sent out to, uh, the board, uh, earlier last week. Uh, this, safety's always been our top priority, uh, to keep our employees safe. It, it's been something that Matt Burke has really pressed us on to help lower a lot of our insurance claims, uh, help our health insurance costs. Uh, with that being said, Matt Burke, with the help of Mandy and Cam, have really, uh, done a yeoman's job in, in keeping our employees safe, doing the things that they're supposed to be doing. They performed it, or they, uh, started a safety committee, and they've been passing that information out to all of our employees. And I think as of today, we're, uh, hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty-six?
Hundred and twenty-six.
Hundred and twenty-six days without a reported accident in the city of Elwood. And, uh, that's phenomenal with, uh, you know, all the stuff that, that everyone's doing day in and day out, the, the claims that used to come in. And I, Matt Burke and I were talking about this, and it's probably been, uh, over a decade that we went this long, that, uh, an accident hasn't been reported. And it's to Matt's Burke efforts, her team's efforts, Mandy's, the safety committees, and, uh, our department heads just passing out this information. So, Matt Burke, uh, I'll let you, uh, say anything that I didn't.
Well, um, this has been so important to me, and I tried and tried, but I couldn't do it myself. So, um, when Mandy and Cam in my office, uh, teamed up, it just kind of started. So, uh, we definitely annoyed the mayor and other departments, but it's now, you know, coming around. People are, um, people are enjoying it and understanding it, and it's just been very slow, but, um, now we're a hundred and twenty-six days, and I never thought that would happen. So, everybody that participates is great, um, so, meaning I am like, you explain the safety manual.
Nine, six pages. Yeah, and it is huge, so I do apologize, but that's why we're just asking you guys to review it right now. We're not asking for approval, but I would, like, if you could review it, then we would put it back on the agenda for September and then ask for your approval then. The way this will work is if you guys do approve this, then what we'll do is we will make sure every department head has the copies to distribute, and we'll also have our copy there as well, employees, this would be part of their onboarding process. So once they get hired in, they would sign off that they did receive the safety manual. Um, and we did have a meeting, our meeting this morning, we discussed workman's comp issues. Not anything specific, just more so of why this safety manual's so important. One of the things that they're always asking is, did you have a policy for this? Do you have a safety manual that prevents this? Do they have, were they wearing their P P D? Where was the department head when this happened? This safety manual will then protect us and help us on our end, and we're just making sure that we're doing our job to make every, make sure everyone's fully educated on it, so.
So onboarding, onboarding in the past was fill out the application, and then you're at work the next day or the same day. And, you know, you may be working with a guy that's got twenty-five years of experience. And we've always done it this way, type of tally, where we've kind of changed that whole perception and perspective that now they, they watch videos before they start, the department head watches videos, our employees watch videos, and they actually see the safe way to do it. So it's, uh, been a great, great asset for this, uh, this city, and it's helped reduce our claims, obviously, uh, from where we're at right now, so. Kudos to you guys. Board, I don't know if you have any questions. I'd like you to digest it a little bit, and then, uh, we would look at it in the, uh, September meeting for approval.
And you, like, this is very important for you guys to review. I know it's, it's a lunch, but you usually have different backgrounds and stuff that I feel like it's very hard for people that sit in the desk chair to talk about what you do in the street department. And so that's kind of where the safety committee came about. That's not a department head, that's an actual employee that, you know, works there every day. So, um, you know, they definitely helped, but we want you guys to really look at it, so, if... Yeah, so they all go through their meetings as well. They go back after our meetings and they share with their teams. Um, I did actually type up a pretty descriptive thing from our, our notes from our meeting this morning, just because it was such a big topic. Um, but this will also include, like, if we were to have a tornado or a fire, or where do we go? What is our process? Um, just things that we're doing a lot better with now, so, that's in there.
Board, do you have any questions? All right. That does wrap up the meeting for Monday, August fourth, twenty twenty-five. I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn. Got a motion by Mr. Waters. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Crim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign.
Yeah, I just knew of John at three thirty. Joey. Five, if you want to pass it, we'll say nine. Okay, you guys, we can pass the Steelmark compliance form.
Hey, hold, hold, hold.
Okay, it's not the same nine as introduced, it's just a compliance, so we can, we can do that one.
There's something to include. Steelmark compliance form.
I think you might have five, and it has something saying nine. All right, let's just, uh, so our president's not here, our vice president, she's not here. The mayor's still here. Please, they all left. These are here, they're not gone now.
He's not a council member.
But our president's not here. Or our vice president, or nobody else.
He what?
Looks like a chair president.
Some words add that.
Shouldn't take longer. If you guys want to preside, you won't be discussed, correct? It has. We can introduce somebody. Those ordinances are not going to be discussed tonight. Those are old businesses.
So we're just Steelmark?
Just the Steelmark in minutes.
Okay, well, then I'm leaving. I'm going to Miami, I think, out of Mississippi.
Counsel, would you, would you like me to help?
Jim? Jim? Are you going to then, Jim?
He wants me to do it? Good evening, welcome to the Elwood Common Council, six thirty, August fourth, twenty twenty-five meetings. Uh, Matt Burke, please have a roll call.
Did someone take my paper?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. President, my name is Jeff Gray, and I am the Island City Attorney. Both our president and vice presidents are asked tonight to have four members, because we do have a forum. We're going to roll call.
Uh, Noon?
Here.
Abernathy?
Here.
Keelish? Waters?
Here.
Tiner? Everson?
Here.
Right.
We go to the corner for seven. Uh, next, uh, item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Seeing none, move to number three on the agenda, which is tax payments, Steelmark LLC. It is a compliance, uh, hearing. Mr. Savage?
We have Rob Page here for Steelmark also. If we had any questions for him, go ahead.
Have you moved into your new office?
We have furniture built.
So Bill, this is a, uh, this is a compliance area based on our previously granted personal property and real estate, um...
Yes, when we make the, the tax payment committee, two of us, Chris, your partner, myself, and everything looks very... They're in the Old Exalope building now.
Is this a recommendation from your office to fill in your previous statements?
Yes, there has been an issue, approve the compliance.
Yeah, approve the compliance, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Pay, or Mr. Savage? Now, we're entertaining a motion to approve the compliance statements for the real estate and personal property, uh, the, uh, of Steelmark LLC. They could be done at the same time if you so wish.
Sorry.
I have a motion to the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both compliances are granted. Now, some Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, you want that table? Is there a motion to table Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven? I have a motion to, and a second. All those in favor of table, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is stated. And Matt Burke, on the old business, or the, those ordinances, the old, uh...
Wait, they're still getting worked out sometimes?
I do have an renewed business, number seven, the twenty twenty-six budget meetings are Monday, the eleventh, at four thirty and five thirty. Is that correct?
You got my papers.
I did.
Okay, um, I was, this budget has been so just different with everything going on. Um, I would like, instead of just to do a budget committee meeting, I would like to have, like, two, two meetings, possibly three, um, just with, like, the members, and possibly, like, on the budget committee side of it, go over it with reading, and then have, um, just meetings to make sure all the council knows that all the changes is what's happening. So, um, I don't have my meeting with the D L G F till this Thursday. Um, all the department heads have their budgets. Uh, they have, like, a week from, uh, last Wednesday to, if they had any problems, everybody's okay with it, the mayor's fine with it, um, it is balanced now. Um, but it's definitely different, and we've had to cut quite a bit. Um, so I want everybody just to see it, to understand it. So, um, I, I thought possibly, like, an hour, possibly an hour and a half. Um, I figured there was probably one person that ended up couldn't go, so I could videotape it and send it to them. So we're allowed to have three per group. I just didn't know if Monday, the eleventh, would be good for anybody.
What time?
It, it's, that's up to you guys.
What was the other date?
Right now, that's, that's the only date I had, I, possibly the nineteenth, which is next week. I leave for State Board of Council's conference, it's in French Lake, on Tuesday and Wednesday. So I have to leave Monday night, but that's, I mean, we could do it after the...
Did you say the eleventh or the eighteenth?
Yeah, or the nineteenth, like, if any of those... I know Mondays aren't good for Sam, um, so I was just kind of thinking two days of a Monday.
You're wanting us to split, right, like...
Yeah, so, like, three at each meeting is all we can have. I mean, I can cut Monday as long as it's earlier. Okay, wait, wait, wait. So Danielle, you're good at five thirty?
Yeah.
Um, wait.
Sure.
Are you good for four thirty?
I could do four thirty.
No, how late can you do?
Uh, which is it?
Uh, you said the nineteenth's better, right?
I can do four thirty and the nineteenth.
I can do four thirty on the eleventh.
What times would be... Or earlier, I mean, I work, my last meeting's at three. Jim, could you be in an earlier time? Is your schedule more open early?
Well, I don't know, I have a product.
Okay, true.
I think.
I will just, since nobody's, this is, say it out. We'll just send it out, that's what I want to think. Um, I did print out the budgets too, to give you guys, um, so you can start looking them over, writing down the questions, all that stuff. So, um, I just wanted to give you an update, because usually by now, we've already had our committee meetings, everything is done, and... It is now, but it's not communicated out enough yet.
We will have a meeting, I would do that, so the department heads and that, the one that I have to...
Yes, that, that's the one with, like, the, the budget committee.
Right.
Yeah, so the, um, it would be the whole committee, which is you all, is there, uh, Mark? Jason, was there?
Yeah, that one's still going to meet.
Yes, that one is still going to meet, yes. Yep, just add one more council member to you, this, yes, so. Yep, and then the other one won't be technically the budget committee, but I want everybody to understand.
What's the date we have to pass the budget?
Is it the ninth? It's the first introductions, you have to pass it by October thirty-first. But we'll have the first reading and opening on that first meeting in September after leaving. So the eighth will be the meeting, that will be the first hearing and introduction, first reading. Then we'll do the next one in October. So, um, anyway, I'll get back, so that's really, there's no vote or anything, I just wanted to give an update. Did we do this?
Did we meet for the... No. I skipped over that.
It's okay.
I'm not very good at this. Is there a motion to approve the minutes that's presented? I have a motion for the floor, second for the chairman, I think. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything else for the council? There is nothing. The next meeting is on Monday, September eighth, which is the first Monday because of Labor Day holiday. All for motion to adjourn? Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.